Tim's here, we can start.
Okay, let me just get my book open. I would like to call the Shasberry Elementary School Board meeting to order. I will be taking Fran Kenny's place because he is out on personal matter. And we will start by with citizen comments, are there any? Hearing none? Presentations, any presentations? Nope. Everybody please stop me if I'm missing something, okay?
You're doing great so far.
Okay, thank you.
Halfway done.
Okay, action items, so at this point we are, um, need a motion to approve these items, financial.
So moved.
Okay.
You're just doing the treasurer's report?
I think I'll just do the treasurer, the financials, so we'll start with the treasurer's report. Does he usually group them? Does this print, he does them separate?
Yeah.
Okay, so motion to approve the treasurer's report? And we have a motion, is there any discussion?
Um, I had some questions, the treasurer's not here. And I'm not sure that anybody else here can answer them. But I, I wasn't clear on what state aid was. Whether that was the, an installment of the grant from the state. It doesn't show up on the, on the budget sheet, so.
Alright.
That's a question, and it's a significant amount of money, so just wanted to get clarification on that.
Okay, and so at this point for those types of questions? Do, do we just put those in the minutes and then we come back to that?
Yep, yep. I, I do think that's the general state support grant.
Well, that's what I assume, just because of the size of it, but if you look under the current column there, there's a zero for the month before.
This is twenty five two.
Anyway.
And I think that they're quarterly or, you know, significant payments in a timeframe, so maybe it missed your budget statement and it's on the treasurer's report, maybe from the month before, or, you know, that the timings just aren't aligned.
Okay, um, so we have a motion, now I need a second to have it approved?
You've already got a second.
We have a second?
Yeah.
So it's approved.
You gotta vote it off?
Oh, now let's take a vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Next is the budget transfer request of May fifth. Are there any questions? Oh, I, I need a motion.
So moved.
To approve, are there any questions?
I'd had a question.
And that would be for treasurer?
Well, yeah, although maybe Jeff knows the details here.
I can try.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's, what's, what is?
Um, some of these are Rick transferring some money for some, um, obviously spent some overspent accounts that he saw coming because the budget, we were asked to close up the budget spending last Friday. The principal's salary is a request that I had to go to hardware instruction to get some Chromebooks for the school, which are some laptop computers. Um, but the other ones are Rick's request.
I'm wondering what the legal service charge may be.
Is that for?
I think that's ours. I think that was in the last, the dis-. I think that finally cleared, yep. That's what we spent so far.
That's, okay, so that hadn't already been transferred? We hadn't?
No, no.
And that legal service was for the, um, the ID?
Right, yep. That was to Gillies.
Yep.
So, um, to be clear on this, then the first column is where the money is being transferred into?
Yes.
And the second column is where it's coming from?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, right here, a second to approve the budget transfer.
A second.
All in favor? Okay, next is the VSB IT report programs. And Donna, did you want to, I need a motion to approve?
So moved.
And then Donna, did you want to speak a little bit about that?
Uh, this is just an agreement that, um, as a board, you need to approve maintaining the membership in VHI. That is, uh, the, and you've, you've worked with VHI for many years, but as far as our health insurance for all of our employees, we are still going through VHI until any changes are made, um, through the new insurance programs that will be coming up according to the size of schools and the, and the results of contract negotiations. So until there are any changes made, this, we will maintain a membership with VHI. And this is, um, we need a motion to approve, uh, the signing of this agreement to state members of that organization for purchasing health insurance and dental insurance.
The memo on top of this is dated June twenty eighth last year. And I seem to recall at some point in the fall, we had an agenda item with VHI in it, I don't know if it was to approve the same document. Do you know Donna, what the history is, why it's only coming to us now?
Uh, I do not know, and I'm sorry Dave, but I do see that it, it's, um, something that has to be approved before June thirtieth. So I, I think there has been quite a bit of discussion about whether as an, as an SU and as, as our individual boards, we wanted to remain members of this because there have been so many changes, it was hard to understand, um, what the changes would mean to us in terms of purchasing our insurance, but at this point, the state of where we are in understanding and purchasing insurance is, means that we need to continue to be members until we decide to make a change.
Okay.
That's what I understand.
So is it the business manager's request that we?
Yes.
Sign this or approve it?
That was his recommendation, and he is the one that actually signs the agreement, but you need to approve the, um, that you want to continue as a board.
Are there other options available there to school systems, or is this the only choice? I mean, we're doing that because we've been doing that, but is this the only option?
There. It's so complicated, I don't know if I would be the person to explain that to you, but you can talk to Rick about it at the next meeting. I think that if you did not be, become a member of this, which has many connections to our teachers' organization as well in terms of being members of this and purchasing insurance, that then you would have to go out independently and try to find something competitive, which this is a, a group organization that, that is able to get better rates because it's such a large group.
Okay, so anybody have any other questions, any concerns? Anybody have a concern of the date? The June twenty eighth, two thousand thirteen? So nothing has changed in this, and we just need to approve it to go forward for another?
Yes, I think there was just a time lag in, in bringing the level of understanding about, well, what are we going to do, you know, this year? And now it's getting down to where we, we actually, this is, is the, almost the only option, I think.
I'll second the option too.
Okay, all in favor? You all agreed? Okay, consent, I, motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Just for Richard? Yep. The minutes, uh, page, it's not a big one, page three, number two, or line two, Lake Morey, Morey is actually O-M-O-R-E-Y.
That was yours.
It's bad when the principal comes out.
It is. Well, he's, he's, that's what his job is.
It's all of our jobs.
So, did you get that one? Was that one here? Oh, that was?
I had it, we had that circle before. Look at that.
That's it? Uh, that's pretty easy. Okay. What do we do at this point? We have a second? Does he usually break the consent agenda down?
He usually takes it all together.
He does?
But he, he reads them out, he reads the vouchers, yeah.
Do I need to do that?
I have a question on the field trip thing, just quick, because that's the first one I've seen, but, uh, they said they're coming back at school at three, is that, um, reasonable? I mean, is, I just hate to be, if they're back at three twenty, are they?
No.
Late, or is that, you know, planning to be back before then, that's just?
I think that's the latest, that's the latest they'll be back.
Okay.
That's the latest they'll be back, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I've talked with Laura about that. Good question. It's kind of close.
Yeah, it's kind of close, yeah.
Thing that jumped out on, uh, me reading this is how many chaperones there are going to this? That's a lot of adults, the ratio is one to three?
Yep, it is a lot, um.
Must be a fun one.
Yeah.
It is.
I think they, way they have the, the day planned, they're not going to be all together at constant.
Yeah.
So there may be smaller groups, the kids, so, um, everybody's checked out, and I think the more you have on, on a field trip, the better.
Okay.
And they have the room on the buses.
Perfect.
That's usually the other thing with chaperones, you always have the room for them.
Yep. Okay. Alright, so I, um, we have a second, every, all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Do you want to go through the vouchers?
Do you want me to go through that? Do you want, really want me to do that?
I don't know.
Okay. Voucher number twenty four for six hu- one hundred and sixty seven dollars and thirty five cents. Voucher ten twenty for forty six thousand, six hundred and eighty eight dollars and seventy five cents. Voucher ten twenty one for ninety seven thousand, two hundred and ninety six dollars and ninety four cents. Voucher ten twenty two for forty seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty six dollars and ninety nine cents. Uh, voucher ten, uh, twenty ten for seven hundred and fifty eight dollars and twelve cents. Uh, voucher twenty eleven for thirty eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety eight dollars and fifty two cents. Um, I think that is it. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, or you do?
Oh, I do. I mean, and I have a second, now I, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Wow, this is a lot harder than you think. Alright. Um, so now we have facilities, kitchen floor repair, parking lot update, and Otter Creek water line.
So, we had some tiles missing on our kitchen floor, particularly in the cooking area. So we, uh, were able to find some money in this budget to get Cameron Forcuma to come in and actually repair majority of that floor. Um, so I want to give you guys an update on that, it's going to be done probably first thing this summer, once the school year ends. The parking lot, if you recall, we've talked about creating a parking lot where the small playground is, um, as soon as you pull in on the right-hand side of the drive. We got three quotes in from various local gentlemen that were looking to do in, possibly do in the project. The lowest quote was just under twelve thousand for the parking lot itself. We do need to consider, uh, the line that we share with the neighbor on Buck Hill. She has requested, uh, if we do do the parking lot, then we put up a stockade fence in that area, straight across that line, just to block, um, block anything from that end. Also put in a, ask for a bid for a hu- or a large fence behind the basketball court. So that anybody's playing basketball is not going, the balls aren't going to go into the, the parking lot area. This is something that Jay and I talked about, talked about with the board. We think the best plan is to first get the water line done, see where we stand as far as funds, and then look at this being done, once the water line is finished and that's paid for. I, I think we'll have funds for both of these, but water line takes precedence at this point. Which leads me to the third item. Otter Creek is coming Friday morning, I believe eleven o'clock, to, to do the plan, they've been behind with the weather. So that's why they haven't come until, uh, Friday morning, but they're going to come and do the initial planning for us. And once we have that, we can, uh, start deciding when we're going to do it, put the bid out to who's going to do it. Think it'd have done, uh, again, first, probably one of the first things we do this summer.
Jeff, how many, I'm not, I don't remember the parking lot conversation.
No.
How many, how many parking places?
You would ask me that, Dave? Um, I want to say between fifteen and twenty.
And was it going to be this side of the basketball court?
It's going to be where that playground is, as soon as you pull in.
Yeah.
Wherever that playground is, behind the basketball court.
Okay.
I guess you'd say behind that first two.
Okay, so it's going to replace the playground?
Yeah, we were going to move the playground, uh, to this far end of our other playground.
Okay.
And then turn that into a parking lot.
Okay, and it, it's just additional parking for, to serve the school?
Well, it'll serve multi purposes, but mostly the school, it'll alleviate a lot of congestion during, especially during pickup time, um, when the buses are coming in and parents are coming in to pick up students.
Right.
Um, it'll leave like congestion during voting day, when there's, the whole town's coming through to vote and they're using our parking lot, the firehouse parking lot, Buck Hill Road.
Right.
But I think it's mostly, it's, it's going to be a great safety, um, relief. Um, it's a, it's a concern I've had since I've been here is that pickup time. There's a lot of cars going through and three buses that are trying to pick up kids safely. Um, I think that would alleviate a lot of it.
Just a suggestion, oh, sorry.
Mentioned that, uh, the, the town would love to see that happen too, because, uh, we are always at pickup and drop-off park in all, all around the firehouse where it says, please don't park here, this is the firehouse, but there's nowhere else to park.
Yeah.
It would be great if the school had its own parking.
And there's not that much equipment there, since that old playground was taken down.
Okay.
It's a number, it's number pieces, and we, uh, Jay and I talked, just having a volunteer Saturday, get some parents here, and we can, we can get it done. And I think one of the per, one of the people that put in a quote, said that he would donate some time, his equipment to help us move the stuff if he got the project.
Jeff, what'd you come up with for, uh, top coating? Uh, you're going to go with the?
Just gravel, just gravel top coating for now, and, um, I know we've talked about paving in the, in the future, and that would be something we look at once we get all of the projects done around that area.
Just an idea too, on the, uh, you said you were going to put a fence up where the basketball court is?
Yep.
Um, didn't know if it'd be better to have a, a fence, um, a net fence?
Well, I think, that's what we did look at.
Instead of a wall, so you can see?
I'm sorry, I misspoke, we did talk about a net.
Okay.
Jay did ask about, um, the fencing company, did talk about putting a net on.
Putting a net, yeah.
Yeah, a net offense.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be, okay, we'd have to really toss a ball.
Really get over that, yeah.
Yeah.
Ultra.
They will.
So how would the parking go? Would it be?
There's a couple different configurations, uh, we do need to get a site plan done, DVR has to do a site plan, there's a couple configurations, um, Jay and I talked about, trying to keep the traffic maybe on that side, instead of coming through the parking lot again, and, and just going in and out that way, even talked about possibly going out of Buck Hill Road. Um, so we need to do a site plan to figure out which is the best one.
Yeah.
That'll work for us. So it's a bunch of options, plus maximizing the parking that's in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a pretty big project, actually, Jen.
Yeah.
And it's, it's going to be well planned, uh, is one of the zoning and planning, uh, requirements, so. I was surprised that it wasn't just a, you know, over and done and do it.
Yeah.
It's got to go through all the steps, so.
Sure.
It'll, it'll turn out well.
Yeah. It's a big decision.
Yeah, you pro- you would probably need to get a permit to go back out onto the road and make it in driveway, so, yeah. It's big.
Okay, okay, and now you're back on, court, principal.
Um, so last week was a, was a pretty exciting week here at Shasberry. Uh, I'll start with, uh, sec- or sixth was Teacher Appreciation Day, actually all week was Teacher Appreciation Week, but Teacher Appreciation Day was actually the sixth, which was Tuesday. We had a nice luncheon for the teachers, catered by, uh, Elm Street Market, brought in a bunch of sandwiches and chips and, and drinks for the, for the staff, and, and some of my secretaries made some desserts for them, so it was a special, uh, special lunch for the whole staff. And the PTO did a week daily raffle, they bought gift cards for the staff. We, and they had the kids pick two names every day of the staff, and, uh, it was, it got to be pretty exciting, I walked around with a little red bag all week. Once the kids saw it, they knew they could pick names for the teachers to see who won the, the gift card. So it was, it was a good way to celebrate our teachers with the privileges we have, and, uh, and I think they really appreciated it, it was, it was fun. Uh, the next day, on the seventh, we had a couple of great things happen, uh, Mr. Scoggins once again organized our Walk and Roll to School Day, which was our third time, third successful time?
Third or fourth, I think.
Did we do it twice last year?
Pretty sure we did it twice.
That's, that spring was the first, but I don't know, I know we were successful in the winter, the, the weather did not cooperate.
It was one, yeah.
Yeah. Um, but it was, uh, very well attended, we had one bus that didn't, didn't get the message, they ended up coming here, but, um, we had a number of kids walking that day, beautiful morning. Couldn't ask for better, better weather. Um, and they got prizes when they got here, some stickers and, uh, and pencils and stuff. Um, so it's going to become a, I'm pretty sure, at least a biannual, if not two times a year, event, if kids are really enjoying it. And then later that evening, uh, as you saw last month, Laura Bujo and Sue Phelps brought some fourth graders here for their South Side Challenge. They had their final presentation for the community, uh, last Wednesday night right here in the library, and in these hallways where the kids showed off their, their work for the last, since January, so last several months. And they had three D displays of their rooms, um, the whole process was laid out on these tables, so the, so the community and the parents could see what the process was, that these, these kids went through. Um, Derek was there, he did a great story in the banner, if you, if you saw it. And, uh, it was great to see their, their uninhibited imagination on display, because as adults, I think we kind of say, oh, that's not possible, that's possible. And there was planetariums as an, as an option, um, a lot of pet rooms, a lot of gymnasiums, um, an aquarium, one per, one girl had, she wanted a huge aquarium in this, in this space, a lot of technology, uh, rooms where kids could tinker and learn about technology and stuff, it's, um, we're hoping that it's very inspiring to the community and that it, it may lead to something where the kids can have this space in Bennington and have this opportunity. So it was, it was fun, and it was great to see them do a nice job with that.
May I just add a little something?
Absolutely.
Oh.
Donna was there.
I was there, and, uh, another great part of it is that students all gave, had their ideas presented in a little station. But they also had written wonderful, uh, reports on what careers they were looking forward to, and they had gone through several edits of their essays about what it was they were looking forward to being when, uh, uh, as a career, and they were very inspiring. So I just want to say that that was also a wonderful part of the event, it's really to stimulate, um, the, our, looking to the future and, and what are the possibilities for the students, so it was exciting at that young age to, to get them thinking about, you know, what is it that, uh, you're working for?
Interesting you mentioned that, because I was in, I happened to be in Laura's class earlier this week, and the kids pulled out a journal entry from beginning of the year where she asked every question, what do you want to be when you grow up? And then they pulled out a journal entry, they did, to her for this project, about what do you want to be for, when they grow up? And they got to see what they wrote in September compared to what they wrote here in May. And looking at, first looking at how much and what the, just visually what it looked like, and how much more they had written this time. And then she asked them, okay, how many of you changed your mind compared to what, what was done through this project, and a number of kids, some kept the same. But it was, it was great to see, and they noticed that their writing is much more cleaner, it's much more, um, detailed. Um, it was very interesting to see that, I was glad to see that, uh, that comparison between the two.
Do you have, uh, can you tell everybody the date of the gymnastics show that's coming up?
The school gymnastics show, I believe, is next Wednesday, Sarah?
Twenty first.
Twenty first?
One fifteen? I believe it's one fifteen.
One and one fifteen.
Yeah.
And then the evening.
The evening is?
I'll, I don't know.
That's always a venture.
Yes, they have a strength.
They work very hard.
Yes, they do.
Alright, uh, moving on, superintendent?
Uh, I just would like to report on our new math program that was approved by the SVSU at their last meeting, so, um, as a result of that approval, we have been able to really start to move forward and get materials, uh, teaching materials into teachers' hands. They're already arriving, so it's, it's great, and we're planning to have a professional development, um, week, the first week of June, where we will have every grade level have, um, start with a half a day. And we will be building on that, um, when everyone gets back in August, but this first experience will be to look at the materials and how they align with the Common Core curriculum standards at each grade level, so we will bring all the teachers of each grade from all the schools, which is always a, a great event, that all the first grade teachers get together and all the second grade teachers get together. And it builds great discussion and knowledge of, of what are the, um, the new standards and how do we most effectively teach them? And it really is a great experience when we do those grade level groupings. So we will continue, um, to, to do that and build on that professional development, the, uh, presenters are coming from the, um, company for Go Math and going to go through, um, all the materials and, because it's, uh, we were just talking, it's, um, it's a surprising amount of material that, that we cover in math in a year, and when it's new to everyone, it's, it's always, it's exciting, but it's a little bit scary because it just, there's so much to take in, in the material, so we're going to just begin to walk everybody through and how everything is organized and, um, and aligned. And I think that that will be very helpful for teachers to have before they leave for the summer. And then when we come back, we will continue to build on the knowledge and the materials themselves for the students who will come in, in, later in the summer, so. Yes, Larry?
So this is designed to go online, when, when will we actually be?
We'll be using it in the fall when we come back.
Well, I expressed at the SVSU meeting that I had real concerns about, uh, changing our math program. We, for a long time, had listened to Jim, we need to put a math program in and run it long enough so we can start to see some results. And I think we're three years into, uh, a program that we started. Uh, and here we are changing again. And, uh, I thought it, um, I was surprised to see Shasberry teachers give it their endorsement, that was a big point on telling me. Uh, they also had done a, a scorecard, uh, to analyze all of the programs, and there's at least five programs presently in our system, in the SU system, that are being used for math. And, uh, the Go Math program came up and met at least what those programs are, are doing now. So, I, I guess all I'm asking is that Jeff, you, you keep us abreast is to the effectiveness of this, because I, I do think we lose things when we change midstream. And if, if we're on a successful course with our math program, uh, I'm not always sure we're able to carry, carry the momentum of that when we, when we switch horses again, so.
And that's always a good point, Murray, you know, it is hard to change, but I, but, uh, one thing that we really liked about the Go Math program is, a lot of these different programs use different strategies, different teaching strategies. Uh, for instance, the Singapore Math is really about the bar modeling method of instruction, it's really a strategy. It's, Singapore Math isn't, uh, isn't a set of standards, or it's, it's really a descriptor of how do you teach that to students, and many of those strategies are incorporated in this program. So I know some people use bridges, and many of those strategies, um, were, there were parallels, and there were many things in common. It was not a, a light decision, this was something that teachers really studied together. And to make sure that it was, uh, the best alignment that we could find for our teachers.
Well, I mentioned it that night, that, uh, the reason I was apprehensive is because it does have Common Core stamped all over it. And I don't think I've heard anybody really come out and, uh, really enthusiastically endorse Common Core at this point. And we're watching several things throughout this, the United States take place that indicate, uh, it, it's got some bumps in the road. I did ask the question, if we were going to change to a math program and Common Core was not a factor, we didn't have to consider Common Core, would, would this be the program we'd go with? And that group of teachers that was there said emphatically it would be. So I guess there's a level of comfort in math that, that we're changing to something that has a good chance for success.
Yeah, and I mean, it almost seems like it's building on, um, you know, the skills that they already have and that they can carry through with them, because kids live on it, learn on a different level with math especially, some, something, sometimes they just might get it, or it takes them forever to get it, so, sounds like it's?
Yeah, and it has nice, uh, parent component, and it has great online, uh, resources, it has smart board activities all built in, so it really has, um, it really brings together a lot of the strategies that are really just good instruction. And it will be consistent and common across our whole, all of our schools, which, as students move around, maybe not so much for Shasberry, but say between the Bennington schools or between, uh, Pownell and Bennington, there's a lot of- the Bennington schools or between uh Pownell and Bennington, there's a lot of movement and transition. And students need to have the same language and the same expectations as they move from school to school. So I think that's also very helpful.
That's one of the things I'm I'm somewhat concerned about, Donna, is is that's always touted as as a main ingredient, that a kid in Missouri can can win on a given day and he's gonna be doing math the same as a kid in Vermont. And and I don't know that that's that's even possible, but it's always sold that way. And I think it's important that that our kids do um what we think is is the right program here. And and not necessarily be sold that it that it that its success hinges on something that's happening on the other side of the the uh United States, so.
Well, that wasn't really my intent, it's really that our neighbors are using a similar program and a vocabulary, math has its own.
As long as we keep it local, I'm I'm in total support of that, that as long as it's it's here and it's Bennington and whatever. But too often, it's given a much broader stroke than that, that it that it depends on uh us, the Common Core again, that we're all gonna get in the same box.
I think that was a driver for us, Larry, but you know.
Yeah.
They are our state standards, it's it, we call it Common Core, but it's the state standards, it's not.
And they are all of our kids go, they all take those skills to the middle school and they'll take those skills to the, so I think that's important too. Um, Chair Report. What do I have to say?
There you go.
Now's your time, right, now's your chance.
No, I have nothing to say, I have nothing to say, no, no. D, next, the next SVSU legislative breakfast is June second. If anybody would like to go, and where is that usually held, same place?
It's usually at a central office conference room.
Okay, and the time is?
It's early, seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five, yeah.
Yeah, and did you attend, did any board members attend?
Usually uh, Shasberry usually is right there.
Okay.
Yep.
And anything exciting happen at the last?
One, two, three, from Shasberry.
Yeah.
It's a free breakfast.
Well, did you learn anything you wanna share with us?
I didn't make the last.
Oh.
And Fran.
There wasn't one in May, I think it's one in uh, yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, and then number five is other. Other, anybody have another?
Uh, yeah, I have one, at least one.
Okay.
At the last SVSU uh uh meeting, we uh approved Wendy Pierce as the uh, she will be the Director of Special Ed now.
Okay.
And that was unanimous.
Okay.
And uh, just wanted to mention that 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 was, I think that's a good move. And I believe, Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's fourth, uh, a little over a year, that appointment, correct? That position, I know we had some discussion about that, that it wasn't, some folks were thinking it was just for the end of this year, but it, I believe it encompasses next year as well, so. Do you, do you catch that?
Uh, I am, I am not sure what that, the way that contract was written, because I know it's, they they have been shifting the directors' end dates of the contract, so I don't know if hers would align with the other directors or if hers would be a different timeframe, I really don't know that.
We're looking, um, I'll uh go in, I also went to a North Bennington School uh meeting uh last week. On their agenda, they were going to have a discussion about District One. It was, it was quite brief, uh, they really had uh no real concerns about it, except how did we go about getting the the actual report created, that was one of the uh the questions they had. And uh, they were disappointed that they weren't better, that the North Bennington Board wasn't better informed. And I I don't know what else we could do, I mean, outside of, we've been, I think, very open and very uh careful about making sure that we included them in the discussions, that they were welcome to come. And so um, I told them that Rick wouldn't be here to go over the report tonight, but he'd be here in June, and they were more than welcome to to come in June. And I also wanna mention Wendy did a a a an analysis, I guess, of of uh how she works with their program, and it was very well done. I I think uh it was a, it was a good report, I think it satisfied a lot of uh, a lot of questions they had. Uh, concerning District One, as I mentioned, we'll we'll um hopefully have more information at our next meeting. Um, we're also waiting on uh some information from uh Stitzel and Page concerning some questions we had about uh school choice. And Donna, I'd appreciate it, we've been waiting for almost three months for this information, and I know Fran has been after him, so maybe having it in the public record will spur.
Oh, okay, I would want, need to know your question and what you've been trying to do.
Kathy is, Catherine is very aware of it, and I know she's been trying as well, so if you could put a little
Okay.
Little push in there, that would be great. That's my other.
So, um, there you don't have any new information about uh District One in particular, uh what the process might be for?
We really haven't, uh, until we, until we get the uh school choice information, we wanted to make sure that we, that if we included that in the in information that we're giving out, that we were correct, and we had a pretty good idea how that would impact uh any decision we might make, so. Kinda held back, and again, I I just would like to do it all at once and not in drips and drabs and so, the answer to your question, no?
So is um anybody willing to give an SVSU report from the last meeting to the board? Because I know Fran usually gives a recap.
A, I wasn't there.
Okay.
And B, I'm not the SVSU rep from Shasberry, so. That leaves you.
Yes.
I'm trying to think which one, you know, it's 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 been a.
Yes.
And Wendy gave the report on the.
I think we covered Wendy's report. Wendy's.
Gave the report on the focus monitoring.
Yeah, focus monitoring, uh, that was a, that was another good report, I'd recommend to anybody uh get ahold of the copy that uh they had with that, uh, they addressed uh several concerns that were um, that came forth with the original uh focused monitoring uh uh analysis that was done. And and uh, so she did a a good job in in uh at least making us aware of what the answers were at this point.
And how is the Superintendent search going?
It's still in progress.
Okay.
Um, if I'm guarded, it's it's because I really don't know where to, um, what to actually say about that. I believe we're in negotiations with a candidate, so I think we'll leave it at that, that it's gotten that far. I guess that's the good news, is is we've got a good timeline, and if that piece uh goes well, um, we should be in in good shape by the end of the school year, so.
Anything else you wanna share, Donna? Want to tell us anything about you?
About me?
Yeah, like where's your position, what is going on with the Assistant Superintendent?
It has been decided that they would wait to post that and to hire until there was a superintendent.
Okay.
Uh, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Director's position is posted. So I think that is through this week, and then they will probably start to interview. And I think there are quite a few candidates.
Okay. Okay. Um, and I guess that is it, FYI, is the next regular Shasberry meeting is going to be Wednesday, June eleventh. Um, and you can find the Budget Status Report, the Student Enrollment for May, and the School Board's Member Listing on the website. Do we need to talk about all the numbers confirmed, did anybody have any changes for their information?
It's Shasberry, that's good.
Yeah, it is Shasberry. Does everything look like it's good, John?
I believe that um I have a three-year term rather than a two-year term.
Yeah, that looked a little suspicious myself, I, and so, did, and we s- we switched, did we switch? I'm two, I was three-year and now I'm two?
Well, I'm not sure about you.
Okay, I thought we did something like that.
So my term runs through two thousand seventeen, which is correct, but that would make it a three-year term.
Okay. So Todd, what are you, are you a two, or you must be a two?
Forever by looks.
Yeah, you're you're a lifer.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if it's a one year, because I was uh voted in and if I have to run again, or what happens with that, but.
You do, okay.
I think because you were appointed.
Right, appointed, yeah, I think it's only one year.
Okay, but you would be, you would be running for the two-year term, so there's two, two years and three, three years.
Yeah.
Gotcha. And the um, different committees, I don't see your name on anything, Todd.
I figure it'd be on all of them, since I was the first.
And now you're the first meeting boy, you're open.
Yeah, I don't know, looks good to me.
It looks good to you?
Yeah.
Well, I can't.
I can join a committee if I.
I I can't make any of the during the day meetings at all anymore, which are most of these, the finance, the food service and personnel. So um, there's nobody to represent those two during the day meeting.
I can do those.
You can?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
So that's food service, yeah.
And personnel, yeah.
Do you like foods?
Yeah, yeah, that's always.
It's an interesting one.
It is a good one, it's very good, so is personnel. They're all very, they are, they're all very interesting, and it gives you a better understanding of how things are run and how, what a great job Central Office is doing.
Good.
Yeah. Um, okay, anything else?
Can I acknowledge that Alice has joined us?
Sure.
I wondered if she had something that she wanted to share with us.
We had a wonderful visit from their sixth grade.
Yes, they did, that's right.
They went to the Supreme Court.
Yep, yep.
Did they do a mock uh.
They did a mock trial, yep, yep.
I did a.
You did a mock debate with them?
I did a mock bill, it looked very real. And the kids were just great. And um, what else to tell you, well, you probably know that the school consolidation bill failed, did not pass. It did pass the House, it was a close vote, I voted against it on second reading. I wasn't there for third reading. Uh, it failed in the Senate, second reading is the big one, that usually indicates what's going to happen on the third reading. The um, Senate uh did not support it, uh, they ran out of time to deal with it, so at the moment, it's close. Why did I vote against it, because it felt more like me to, it felt more to me like um school board elimination and school consolidation. And uh, I just don't think that's the way to go, I believe very deeply in community, schools, um, taxpayers. I think the more people we have overseeing and running our schools from the local community, the better. The problem, however, has not gone away, and what is the problem, you know as well as I do, school enrollments statewide are down, grand lists are down, school expenditures are not. And that's the problem that has to be dealt with. People on the Education Committee worked very hard on the school consolidation plan to make things better, but I just did not feel they had enough evidence and proof that the quality of education would improve by uh the new consolidation plan. You'd all know the design of the plan, eliminate the school boards, K to twelve, one board um comprised of people through the one man, one vote, uh, through one man, one vote, which means that the small towns such as ours would not have the representation to make the decisions, I don't believe, as we do now about our school. Our town meeting would be at stake, we would no longer be voting on our school budget, we'd be voting on it uh as an entire K to twelve district uh combined with, no one knows. Uh, that would have to be worked out uh by um, by you, whether you wanted to combine with Bennington, or whether you wanted to combine with Arlington, if they wanted to combine with us, it's all very much up in the air, but it's not a question right now because it didn't pass. So, status quo at the moment. What else can, oh, the dual enrollment, of course, that's not elementary school, but you might be interested, the dual enrollment program. Uh, we doubled the number of courses that young people can take, high school kids can take from one to two. Um, that's a really nifty program, that means kids can take college courses while they're in high school, and they can get credit for them when they enter college, which gives them kind of a head start on their on their college studies, and it helps them to save some money when they get into college. More of that is really, is being looked at, now not not only on the state level, which we've been doing for the last few years, but also I've learned on the national le- level, Senator Sanders is really uh along with the state, looking at the fact that so many of our Vermont kids graduate with a twenty-eight thousand dollar on the average debt load. That's really a lot of money to begin your, your possibly your career, maybe further education for Vermont kids, given that the median income around here is forty, fifty thousand dollars a year. So that that's something to really be, to really to really to be looking forward to. I think the most awful thing too about graduating from, or or attending college with a with the potential of a twenty-eight thousand debt load is that if you don't graduate, if you drop out, you drop out without a degree and debt. That's a, that's not a very good situation for young people. So, we're looking very hard at doing something about the cost of education for our children, our youth, and um, oh, just a couple of things, I could go on and on, but I'll stop there. We'll be having our legislative meeting soon, and you'll be hearing a lot more about what we do in the legislature in education.
Will you be at the breakfast on the second?
I'm sorry.
Will you be at the breakfast on the second of June?
Uh, June eleventh.
The legislative breakfast.
Will I be there, I will, yes, will you?
I hope I never do this.
Why don't you come, Mike, it'll be a good one, because at the end of the session, you'll hear it, be hearing lots of stuff.
Yes, Larry.
Jen, I have one other thing, um, it's a good thing. Bill Atwood did a presentation here uh for.
Our teachers.
And I had, he took the opportunity to come in and watch that, and uh, that was, that was pretty, pretty enlightening from a lot of respects, but uh, it uh, it was amazing to see this group of kids. And I was told that that they did not, uh, they did not prepare for this, this was kind of this one thing. And it was like it was chore- uh choreographed, it uh, uh, he had them up, he had them doing things, and they're they're doing things with math and 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 sign language and and uh, but to to watch the behavior was, of course, it didn't hurt to have fifteen teachers in the room, but uh, it it was pretty impressive. And and what I really wanted to share was a comment that he made after we had a a chance to talk for a minute. And uh, he said, in his experience, it really didn't matter what program we worked with, what curriculum we had in place, what mattered was the quality of the teachers that we have. And he was uh somewhat impressed with with our uh teaching corps here in Shasberry, so. That goes to Teacher Appreciation Day.
All right, there's one other thing, we we received a thirty-seven million dollar grant uh for the state for early childhood education. Uh, the pre-K bill passed, so if you already have pre-K, which is just great, but now statewide, it is passed, so every school will have it. But the thirty-seven million dollar grant will be for four years, nine million dollars a year, and that will be for professional development for teachers, it will be for improving the quality of 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 the curriculum, uh, and a number of other things. You'll be hearing more about that as well, and if you want to know more from me, let me know, and I'll send you something in writing.
Alice, can you just touch on?
It was the race of the top grant.
Just touch on the fina- uh, the financial piece of that, uh, where that's designed to come from, because I know that was a, that was a hot topic, is.
The thirty-seven million came from the federal government, it's a grant that was written out of the governor's office.
Okay.
Still federal dollars.
Still our dollars, so.
That's it, anything else? Now I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh.
Who first did it, who first did it?
I heard her say, I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
You're not allowed to make a motion, but you did. Maybe you're not allowed to make a motion, but you did.
Aye.
I'm not allowed to make a motion? No, okay, I'd like to, anyways. All in favor?
Aye.